There's been a lot of well wishers for Mayor Haas. He is doing very well. I spoke with him today and he sounded great. He is on the road to recovery from his setback and wanted me to share with everybody his regards. And, you know, he wishes he could be here, obviously, but he is recovering nicely and he expects to be home within a couple of days. So, all good news to report on that front. So, in his absence, the council does need to appoint a mayor pro tem to conduct this meeting. So, you all need to pick somebody out of your group to serve as mayor pro tem for this proceeding.
Can we do that just nominate?
You just make a motion, second vote.
Move to make Roger Peterman, mayor pro tem for the meeting.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Pheonix.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
Obviously, I wish I wasn't doing this, but that's which is obviously to Eric and then the first is roll call.
Mr. Cameron.
Resident.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Kelly.
Here.
Mr. Beazle.
Here.
Mr. Slaughter.
Here.
And pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice as our strong.
Next item of business is approval of the minutes of the last meeting. You have those in your council packets. Are there any corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
Most been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
All right. As is our custom at these meetings, we have a time for to hear from visitors that would like to address council. So, is anyone present in the audience that would like to address council? All right. If you would come forward, please name an address.
My name's Ann Mangler. 738 South Fort Thomas Avenue. I was just wondering if you would consider a garden plot program throughout maybe different areas of the city. Has anybody ever spoke about that or considered that? Like garden plots?
Like a, like a public garden where people could go manage their own?
Load plot or rent a plot or?
I don't know that we've had that topic.
There's been a few of us talking about it and probably would like to see, maybe consider that program.
Vegetable garden type thing?
Finding a suitable location would be our first, you know, first thing in the community. I'm sorry. I suspected maybe you did.
I run at the track and I run in the, in the park a lot. There's a nice hill between the track and the stables, like just open grass. And I think, boy, that looks really nice for a garden plot in that area. I didn't know if there'd be some other places in the city also. So, I just want to know if you would consider that.
Can I make a comment? We were in the middle of our community action plan and I'm the chairperson on the green spaces and parks and we would love to have you come to our meetings and participate with us and that's, I think it's a great idea.
Do you? Okay.
Yeah. If we can, if we can find a place for it and we can certainly implement that part of the plan. So, yeah. If you can leave your email address, get me your email address somehow, I'll get you on the list.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good thought. Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
I believe you're going to be talking about Burnet Ridge tonight and the work that's to be done on that. Do I need to speak now or would you like me to speak when you guys talk about the actual project itself?
If you want to wait.
Just wait.
Yeah.
Yep, it shouldn't be that long. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the fire department report.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman, members of council. I don't have anything to add to the monthly report that was mailed out, but just a couple of things. Obviously, this is fire prevention month and this year's theme is every second counts playing two ways out. So, think about that with your families, playing ways out of your home, out of your businesses, out of your casual areas where you go out. Make sure you have two ways out. And also, we don't meet prior to November the 4th, but usually we tell everybody that Melissa puts up on the marquee, you know, change your batteries and whatnot on that, but if not, remember this month is a good month to change your smoke detectors if they're over 10 years old and/or change your batteries and your smoke detectors, which you should be doing every time we change the clocks or in and around that range. So, just a couple of things there. As you saw, a busy month for the fire department in the report. Got a busy one going on now with fire prevention. We'll have some good statistic numbers next, at the next meeting for you on numbers of people that we saw and programs, et cetera. So, again, we're staying real busy and also in the process about winterizing our fire hydrants. So, if you see people out and about, we're actually winterizing them, pumping them out and doing those kinds of things, not flowing them, just pumping out the waters, they don't freeze, et cetera. So, a lot of things going on in the fire department. Be glad to field any questions as always, but pretty much my report is that.
Move to receiving file.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
All right. Next, thank you, chief. Next is the police report.
Thank you, Mr. Peterman and members of council. I do not have anything new to pass on from what's already in the September monthly report, but if there's any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Chief, daily, I had a question, actually. We may cover it during our report as well, but two months ago, we had the resident from Holiday Lane Garden Way come in here and asked about speeding in his neighborhood. I think we were going to have increased enforcement in that area. So, my question's twofold. Did that enforcement occur and what was the result of that enforcement?
We have had numerous complaints that have come in the last many months. So, we are definitely trying to get out within the community at the different spots where the complaints are coming in and yes, that is one of them where the shifts have been sitting there and actually looking for enforcement and looking for any issues that might be coming up. As far as, as far as any data or statistics, that's something I would have to research and get back with you on that.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to receiving file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazle.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughter.
Aye.
Next is city administrator's report.
Okay. Just a few update items. The street program for 2017, we, there's been a sighting of our contractor started today, as a matter of fact. The city had an aggressive program this year in terms of what our public works department performed. So, we did a lot of curb replacement, particularly in the area of High View, so a lot of sidewalk replacement on High View. We did all the curb on Custis, did curb replacement on Washington. So, it pushed us back in the year a little bit. So, I'm kidding about the contractor. They were waiting for us, but we are completed and they started today. I think they were on High View doing milling. So, they'll be about a week. So, they should complete their part of the project this week and that'll bring that to a close. On the BA homes, just a quick update, we're obviously waiting on the developer to get their financing. There is the required hearing scheduled with the state and that is on November 14th. So, that should finalize the RIB process and they'll be able to do final securing of their finance part. So, we're still targeting this year before the end of the year to close on that property and transfer it to the developer. So, that's still the timeframe. I have mentioned on a couple of occasions that we had in the city managers association in Kentucky, scheduled the Kentucky Division of Fish and Wildlife coming to our meeting. We actually hosted that meeting at the beginning of this month. They were in attendance to talk about a program that they're working on. It's a statewide urban deer management ordinance. So, they are in the process of drafting a kind of a model ordinance to offer to communities to consider for deer management, population in their communities. They are obviously very familiar with what we're doing in Fort Thomas, with our archery ordinance. So, it generated a lot of discussion, you know, there was not necessarily a lot of problem solving going on, a lot of identification into different types of methods. And I know this council's been through in the past, leading into the ordinances that we have in place locally. And I didn't know if anybody had any particular questions about that. Their goal is to have something, again, that they can offer other communities. I know there's a couple of Northern Kentucky communities that are in the process of evaluating and considering that type of program. So, you know, we'll be doing our annual statistics. This is obviously the time of year that we see a lot of runs from the deer. We monitor just with our program, the conflicts that we have with vehicle collisions with deer. Statistically, that provides us most of what we know. We haven't done any type of flyover to do any type of population study. We had individuals here a couple of months ago talking about, you know, the numbers that they're witnessing in their neighborhood, but beyond that, we haven't had a lot of input on this topic in the, in the office in weeks of months.
Did you get to attend that meeting, Ron?
I'm sorry?
You attended that meeting?
Yes.
Was there anything different being kicked around than we've heard in the past years as far as management options?
No, we talked, they talked about basically a lot of the different methods that are utilized for control. In fact, it was ironic. I did have one call, I take that back. I did have a call from somebody outside the city and talked about a relocation program that they were familiar with. So, I asked about that and apparently there was an effort a number of years ago where they took an overpopulated area in western Kentucky and they transported deer into eastern Kentucky. They don't advocate that. They don't offer that program. It's pretty traumatic to the animal and they really don't recommend that type of program because there's also spread of disease into different regions. But they talked about some other options. I mean, we talked about, you know, the different methods that have been discussed at this council in the past.
Castration.
You know, where they, where they called them and, and, you know, targeted, talked about sterilization. The issue with sterilization is costs and repetitiveness. It's a repeated process. So, they do not offer any assistance in that. So, typically that's borne by the, you know, municipality or the county or whoever's instituting that program and/or through private funding, which I think was mentioned in this group of four. The, you know, the issue with regionally in the, in the climate that we have is the surrounding communities are very similar to Fort Thomas. We have probably more wooded area than some of our neighboring communities, but, you know, if you eliminated them by number, there's what's referred to as a vacuum effect where they'll, they'll find location where they can prosper so they would re-enter Fort Thomas. Obviously, we don't live in a, in a bubble, so we can't just control the population just by identifying what's in Fort Thomas. So, there's a lot of challenges to the whole topic of whether you're being affected. And again, we haven't done any study recently about what our population is. We've done that in the past and we also do not monitor, you know, what, other than what the state does with licensing, we do not monitor, require anyone hunting in Fort Thomas to report, which is another method to, to, you know, gain some statistical data as to what's being done in your community. That's not a part of our ordinance currently. They talked about other programs. There's a program that they do not offer statewide, but they would consider if you had a, an issue that you could identify as being a problem and they, it's referred to as earn a buck, which basically means if you take additional dose, then you can earn a tag for, to take an additional buck in season. So, that's not something that's, you know, that's something that they could consider, but, you know, they're all small measures really to the issue. So, that's kind of, Joe was in attendance as well. Did I miss anything?
I had a pretty good sense.
You think it might be a good idea, just like you were saying with the rut coming up, to send out something or put something on a website about the rut and safety and traffic and, you know, run out kind of sporadically in front of cars?
Yeah, and I think from our statistics, we can identify the areas, particularly Memorial Parkway. Let's say that. Memorial Parkway is obviously the one that we see the most, Row 8. The higher speed limit areas with not as many homes fronting, obviously, are the high hazard areas. But, yeah, we can post something on our website as well.
Any questions?
And while I'm doing advertising, shifting gears to the visioning process, we're very encouraged with our participation in the community. I just wanted to put out there and we'll be posting all this on our website, but the ftcommunityplan.com is up and running and that's where everybody, all of our residents can get online. Our, our people that have participated know that, but for the rest of the public, the ftcommunityplan.com has all the postings of the minutes from all the committees and all the upcoming meeting dates. So, we're going to be promoting that overall. The committees have met, most of them multiple times, but I know the consultant group is working on the question that will go out to all of our residents and that'll be important information. So, we encourage our residents to take part in that survey. So, that's kind of next steps for that. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. Old business. Review requests for stop signs at Holiday Lane Garden Way.
In our meeting, I believe it's our August meeting, we had a gentleman here requesting stop signs at the corner of Holiday and Garden Way. He indicated there was an accident that occurred there. Additionally, they talked about speeding and I did those questions with the chief. That is one of the areas that we are, you know, still gaining information on, on the speeding issue. But we did have our engineers look at that location for a recommendation and they are in attendance tonight. I don't know if you want to comment, but basically, you all want to comment on that?
Rob, Ann with CT Consultants and we are the city engineers for the city. Ron, as you have mentioned, we did receive your request. We evaluated that intersection as we would with any traffic situation, road situation, and we looked at it from a traffic engineering standpoint to see if it meant warrants for a stop sign, a stop condition at the intersection of Holiday and Garden Way. It does not meet the requirements for a stop sign installation at that location. The two side streets do. Garden Way has stop signs, but Holiday does not and it does not meet, meet the warrants for an all-way stop at that location. Any questions?
No, I mean, I guess I would comment that we had a meeting, as a committee, the whole that entire city council met prior to this, just to discuss traffic policies. They are well-developed in the city based on, well, primarily national standards and so we, you know, traffic safety is of the highest concern. I guess I can only speak for myself, but I think all the council members in that meeting would agree that, and I can say just for myself again personally, the worst experiences I've had on this council are a couple of times we had pedestrian deaths with car accidents and, you know, anything that can be done that actually makes sense is, is what we want to continue to be vigilant about. But there's experience all over the country. It's an engineering thing. Everybody's a driver. Everybody is used to certain, you know, cues they get when they're driving, observing different things and, and so it's, it's more complicated than we think people are driving too fast or should stop at this intersection or that's, it's a very complicated thing and, but it's a good thing for us to spend some time with periodically. So, we had a good meeting today and our engineers are going to be looking into some further steps that could be taken that might be able to enhance safety beyond what it is.
As you had mentioned, there are national standards, there's, there's local standards that really comply or allow you to evaluate and make sure that the road operation is in compliance with those, with those standards. And without getting into the specifics, there's traffic volumes the side streets have to have. One thing I will mention, and this was discussed in the meeting earlier, a lot of times folks ask for a stop sign to deter speed and that is specifically in the manual and uniform traffic control devices as listed. That is not to be a use of a traffic control device as stop sign to reduce speed on a roadway. So, if that's the situation that there's concern about speeding and implementation of stop signs is not an appropriate traffic control device.
Any questions of council members? Okay. All right. Thanks a lot, Rob. Now we are to, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a comment on that. Joe Scherling, 192 Holiday Lane. And I had spoke against the stop sign, ever since the years' experience there. I just want to pass on the suggestion and from my observation, that street Holiday Lane in particular is, you know, like I said, it's, you know, it's only like 150 feet long or so. There's just the four houses on the corners, but none in the middle. So, I think that would be particularly easy if, I don't know what the restrictions are on changing, changing parking patterns, but I think that would be an ideal space to just limit parking to one side. I mean, there's, there's no excessive need for parking there, you know, on both sides like, you know, the other, like the rest of Holiday fills up quite a bit. But anyway, I just wanted to offer, that being considered is one way to compromise between improving the safety of, like the neighbor's cars and the kids and anything else there. Part of the problem there is if you're at the top of the hill and you turn down, it looks all clear and then you're turning down and it's a real steep hill and you could be, you know, after you turn, you're expecting you're okay to go. Somebody may turn out from Garden Way, just enough that, you know, then you hit this bottleneck in the middle that nobody could see in advance. Similarly, over on where Summit comes off of Grand and Edgewood off of Grand, there are sharp corners in opposite directions where you're going, you know, where the four lane is going into a sharp turn and if a car unexpectedly shows up there where there's parking on both sides, you know, somebody's got to make a quick decision or if they don't, they hit the cars. But anyway, I just wanted to offer the suggestion that consider limiting the parking in some critical areas like those two areas that both have one side of the street that has, you know, only one or two houses and on Holiday where there's none in particular. And, and then further, like the city already planned ahead or when they did this week's Washington Avenue, this year's project, they widened it by taking out the, the grass strip. I think that should be considered on all the future projects as the parking gets tighter. Sometimes it only takes a foot or two that you might take off of either side or shift it to one side of the utility poles in the way that can accomplish the safer streets with, you know, minimal other changes. But I don't know what the criteria is for changing the parking or you flip a coin as to which side the neighbor wants or doesn't want parking on their side. Just to offer that suggestion.
Thanks, thanks for the input, although you've identified, you know, one of the classic competing considerations, you know, parking versus safety. People want both and there are all sorts of competing considerations like that, like, you know, traffic calming devices and noise and things like that. So, it's, it's more complicated than, I think, but thanks for the input. All right. Now, the Burnet Ridge project.
Yes. The other component in our 2017 street program was addressing road stabilization on Burnet Ridge. That project's independent. It was being designed, obviously, it's a, it's a road stabilization. It's not just a resurfacing. It's on our program under more of an emergency need because there is a failure adjacent to the road. We've worked with CT. They've done a couple of different design possibilities. We really went for the idea that we could address this long-term. We instituted a request with the Division of Water to extend the culvert because we felt like that would give us the best project to stabilize the road. And we put that out for bid and actually received bids that were significantly higher than what our estimates were. And you can see in the information that I provided, they ranged from $145,510. We received three bids. The other one was $191,000 plus and the last one was 224.7. Our engineering estimate was in the range of about $81,000. So, we're significantly over. We're not exactly certain how we got to that point in terms of the bid climate being out of bounds with where we thought the project was, but we are recommending that we reject these bids based on cost. There's certainly the opportunity to look at some value engineering, look at different methods. I mean, initially, we talked about even doing drilled shafts, which would address the problem, but maybe not leave us with as, as many options into the abiding property, may not address the culvert system as well. But I think we are looking at, you know, reevaluating our engineering and I know Rob's in attendance tonight and was doing the actual design on behalf of CT. At this point, we're asking council to reject those bids, let us reevaluate it from an engineering standpoint. And then I would just add that there is, you know, a continued movement there. That road serves really two houses, two residences, so it's, it's not a high travel route. However, it is getting to the point where we need to address it at least on an interim. So, that would be our intention until we can get another project out for bid. It would probably involve us working with a contractor to do some, some basic repair to, to keep the road stabilized, but more importantly, keep the drainage out of the slip area would be the targeted items that we would hit. But again, that's, that's kind of a synopsis of where we are with that project.
The bids we received were based on specs that were created by CT?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah.
I mean, just exactly as it was spec, that's what came in and it was that difference?
Correct.
Well, we had a gentleman that wanted to speak earlier.
Thanks for hearing me today, guys. This is my property, mine and my brother's property and directly across the street from Councilman Slaughter's. I don't know how many people view of this.
I'm sorry.
Adam Blau.
Okay.
I don't know how many, has anybody been down there to the property? I know you've seen it, you've seen it. Have you seen it? It's, it's a serious issue. I mean, Ron's doing a nice job communicating lately to getting back to try to get this thing done, but it is, we just keep slapping Band-Aids after Band-Aid after Band-Aid on it. So, the cost at this point is going to escalate where you're going to get to that same cost of that $140,000 bid at some time just by nickel and diming it all the way up to fix the problem. I did bring a couple pictures. Couple of you that might not have seen or haven't seen it recently. You've seen it recently. This is directly under the catch basin that was put in and I think unfortunately, the pipe that was extended out from the catch basin that ran the water directly down to the creek is falling off. The amount of water that, amount of water that comes down Burnet Ridge is unbelievable. At all angles down, at all angles right, runs right along the ridge, right along the edge of it, tunnels right into that catch basin. I was down there one day and I couldn't, I mean, you take your foot, you stand up and it goes over top of your foot. With the winter coming on, it's going to, you can't Band-Aid this anymore. You can't, there's nothing you can do about it. One of the problems you have too with this project is the dirt has eroded around the catch basin, so it's a valley, goes to a creek and it started to erode a little farther north out. You can kind of see where the cone is. It actually caved in there and now it's eroding under the catch basin. That erosion has gone trickle, not trickle-down effect, or I don't know what you would say, but it's gone, worked its way up the side of the but it's gone, worked its way up the side of the creek. So without this project extending that, is it the culvert, is that what you call it? The culvert? I don't know how many feet they were going to extend it out. That hill is going to continue to slide. So no matter how you look at this project, no matter what you wipe off of it, it's still going to be a $100,000 project. I mean, this is, you can't just put pillars in it, because you put pillars, you save the road, but then you screw the property. I mean, it's going to ruin that part. And that's, any access that I want to do to build a home or anybody, builder, is going to have to come up across from Lester where it levels out, and then it's just going to wash it away. So I think, and I've been coached on this, I think the best action we can do right now to make, move forward, is do some kind of executive order where, I guess I'm sure you guys are more familiar with than I am of this, is where one city councilman proposes the order, someone seconds it, and then you guys vote on it to have the additional funds ready to get the bid as soon as possible. So the lowest bid was 141,000, 145,000, we're only $60,000 off. Now, this money doesn't need to be spent, it can sit there as long as it has, and you guys can put this out for rebid and re-engineering. The fact of the matter is that it's been three years that I've been working on this with Ron, trying to get ready, and it just, it's now spiraled out of control. You know, I mean, you know, and the longer we wait, the longer we try to go to some kind of committee for budgets or however it works up here, the more problems you're going to have. And it's, you're going to, by this time, you're going to be through the winter, and then the two people that live at the end of the road aren't going to have access to their houses anymore. So, I mean, it's a serious, it's a serious issue. And I just was hoping that someone here would make that motion, someone would second it, and we can at least have the funds available from the general fund.
I don't think, I don't think we have a need to like escrow any money towards it if staff makes their recommendation upon engineering. It doesn't have to be kind of put in a separate pot in advance.
Okay, so you guys only, so you guys just say, we want to do this project when the bids come in and we do it? We don't have to do a budget for that?
Typically, it's based on a staff recommendation after engineering.
Yeah, the proceeds would be available. I mean, we, I mean, we budgeted to do the project, I think we were budgeted $100,000 including engineering.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're at $100,000, we thought it would be 80, so we're only 40 off then? If you'd set it off for rebid, then we're 20.
Well, that would include engineering.
Including, including engineering. I, the way it went before, when I was told, is that we were working on, working on, okay, now we got a budget for it, and then once we had that meeting, then the money was released. So now you're telling me that the money can just be given when I need it? So you don't have to redo anything again?
Well, I mean, we have to, you know, based on information that's been provided to us, we need to figure out what to do. And, you know, these bids came over, it isn't clear why they did.
Is it because conditions changed from when the CT did the estimate to when the actual contractors were?
No, I don't think there's been significant change in the condition. You know, I'm not, we're not exactly sure why the bid climate is what it is. I mean, that's significantly higher than what we felt like was designed for the project. And, you know, I think, you know, CT will go back and talk to all those contractors and find out why, you know, why they bid as high as they did, what part of that project is difficult to the level beyond what our engineers expected to be that drove the cost so high, so.
Are there, I mean, there's other contractors that could bid on it, but it's just publicly advertised and then what?
Yeah, I mean, for that, for that value, we have to do, you know, we have to do a closed bid process, and we're required to do that. But yeah, we could rebid it and hope that there's other bidders, we can change the bid schedule, for example, the timing of it, but I think those are some of the discussions we have to have. But I think in interim, I think we're committed, in my discussions with CT, is we will have to do some work in the interim because as Adam indicated, the, you know, the part of the project is being exacerbated by the idea that the water's entering into that area. So we'll have to, we'll have to deal with that now.
How much would that cost? That's my concern. I went down there, I'm not an engineer by any means, but you can definitely see in the last even month here, it's been watering away. So I'm going to keep patching to kind of what Adam was saying here. I mean, is this really going to be more money in the long run, or are we just fixing?
Not necessarily, because some of what we would do would be, you know, that would be done by the contractor. So we're kind of doing that in advance. So we would bench an area, for example, closer to the road, and just get enough fuel in there to hold that part of the road and get the curving back on.
Right.
And the Catch Basin functioning again. But it would have to be built, you know, a box placed and rebuilt for the entire system. And down to the end of the culvert pipe.
Regardless if CT, or if the contractors could start, if we approved this now, we're still going to have to go in there and fix it until the project gets started anyway?
I would think so. I mean, it depends on their timeframe, but I would say that even in the schedule they're in, we're probably going to do some of that work.
You can make it their responsibility if you accept a bid to patch it up right now, you know, as part of a contracted bid.
Well, I mean, that would, they would, we're going to have to pay them to do that.
I mean, it's a pretty, it's a pretty healthy job, and you're already trying to shave stuff up of it anyways, I mean, here's the continuum on the--
So in the near term, you're saying, let's get the city crew down there, do what they can to stabilize it and figure this out.
And get it on, get it on a bid schedule and get it bid out. I mean, there's different scales to that. I mean, you heard Adam talk about, you know, accessibility to the property. You know, if we drill piers, then you are limiting access. If we don't extend the culvert, the grade will be steeper. The initial design that we had was building on top of the wall, we could still do that. Not sure that that cost would be, you know, it would probably be less, but we don't know what it would be at this point. And that's not, I mean, that's not our preferred method or approach to this project still. We still feel like extending the culvert would be the appropriate way to address this.
I think that's, I mean, personally, I've driven one over, that's the only way to do it, to address the sliding on the side of the hill. And you have to think about it too, is my, my plan is to build down there or even sell it. So you're devaluing the property just by peering it. You hurt, that means someone else in the future is going to have to take on that responsibility to shore that up so it doesn't slide. So those are a couple of serious concerns. You know, I think you guys are working well, I think it's going well, but I'm, you know, I've been pretty patient, but I think the people down at the end of the street might not be as patient as me as, I mean, it's pretty bad to drive down there. So you've got to start considering them and not just us when you're taking this into action.
The peering would address the road, but it wouldn't fully address the issue of the culvert head leg.
I think there is--
Which is a problem.
I think there is a sewage pipe that runs directly along the road there, and just north of where you, that picture is, where it's caved down, the reason we haven't, they haven't cleaned that up yet is that it's sitting top up on top of the pipe. So if that road gives away, it's more than just losing the road, it's, there's a pipe that runs underneath, and that's why they haven't, that's what I was told, is why they haven't tried to move the asphalt that's fallen, because there's, who knows how old that pipe is or what kind of damage can be done.
Yeah, it's a little complicated that way, and there's San Terry Sewer that runs parallel to the street, and then there's the intake lines in the street from the reservoir.
Does SD1 have plans to do anything there that could be done? If it's old pipe.
Yeah.
They have no cost responsibility, SD1?
I mean, only, not, I mean, only if they had it scheduled to repair the line, yeah.
But if the line is damaged?
I mean, their line's functioning, so they have no, at this point, if it's not on their schedule for replacement, they have no reason to invest in that. And they don't at this point.
All right, well, let me be clear then, that the funds are available if needed. If we get a bid for 130,000, that's what has to be done, the funds are there. We don't have to do anything here to make any kind of executive order to make those available, whether you need them or not immediately.
We would have to bid it and the council would just approve it, yeah.
Is that how it works? We can't get those funds ready now, so we don't have to wait for the next council meeting for this to get approved?
Well, we couldn't bid it that quick anyway, so.
Okay.
What is the timeline on that?
I mean, for us to advertise and bid, we're probably talking 30 days to, you know, if we had a design today and put it out for bid, we have to advertise it, give them bid period of window, and then have a bid opening. So, you know, aggressively, if we put it out for bid now, we could have bids to consider it or an upcoming meeting. That, maybe.
Well, that's my concern, I think, I mean, if it's me and I'm looking at this, just as a business person, why wouldn't you just ready, have the funds available now and vote on this executive order? And just have it ready so you don't have to sit here and wait? I don't say we get the bid two days later and all of a sudden we have to wait an entire month for the money to be available?
No, I mean, that's not how it works. So we, you know, this came in five days ago, and, you know, the problem was identified, two of those days have been the weekend, and so the engineers are working on it, and if we have to send a crew out to stabilize it, which it sounds like it's going to have to do to get through this process, that's almost the best you can do. I mean, you know--
Oh, I'm not saying that, I know, I know that has to be done anyways. I'm just trying to make sure that I understand that I'm clear, because this is your world, not mine. I've been coached a little bit, but I'm still trying to make sure that I get everything and, you know, so I understand exactly where, I mean, we've been working on, together for a few years on this project now, so it's kind of finally nice to have some kind of, you know, a light at the end of the tunnel and all of a sudden, bam, door shut and--
I think, Adam, what's, I don't know what the timeline's going to be, especially if we have to rebid it, but now that it's at this point, and we've already got a set of bids, and there's something off, is kind of why I brought them, was to revisit it again. But once the bids come in, it's, that's, right now, it's pretty much it. It's all, it's almost done, we're almost to the point where they're going to start digging and replacing.
Yep.
So as quick as it could be done, I think that--
That's just what I wanted to make sure of, is make sure that the timeline is stepping on up, that's all.
The 81,000 was already budgeted for 17, correct?
Okay.
And I, I mean, we could, I mean, just expediting, if you have a bid that you want to present, and it comes, it looks favorable to staff, and if it's three weeks before our regularly scheduled meeting, we could call a special meeting to take an action on just that item, to try to at least shave off that before the next meeting now.
My concern isn't just my property, like I say, it's everybody down.
Right. But I mean, that could, that could happen.
Yeah, especially with the winter coming up.
But my concern is, we got lucky last year, it was an easy win.
Yeah, we did. I agree with all that, but there's still a timing aspect to this. I mean, if we bid it out, you know, they're not going to mobilize the next day. I mean, if we bid it out as emergency work, we're going to pay for it as emergency work. And so we're going to have to do some interim, just to maintain the erosion and the, you know, the drainage that's affecting that area. So that's, that's our first step.
Okay.
And in the interim, we will be getting it out for bid. And, you know, we've, we've been through a long process, and part of the delay is division of water. I mean, getting in a creek line and proposing to add that culvert has taken a long time. And that's unfortunate, but it is the method that we should pursue, and that's what our intention is still. It's the right way to fix the problem, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I did want to make a suggestion while I was up here, I did think of something earlier. We have these beautiful Fort Thomas signs available to us that need to be landscaped, Jeff?
It's on the list.
It's on the list. I tell you what, they were made to hang signs, so why don't we put our first sign up there, Beware of Deer?
There you go.
You drive down Memorial, you come up, I mean, why don't we make use of these beautiful signs that we got a nice grant for that didn't cost us much money, dress them up and put a sign out there for once?
Oh, yeah, we are working with the dream team, and they have a design palette, and we'll be doing some of the--
Just saying, they're there for us.
But the sign is, the sign for Deer Crossing has not been discussed yet.
Yeah, well, thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thanks for coming.
The next item, information. Oh, do we actually need to reject the bids?
Yes.
Taking action, okay. So recommendation is reject the bids that were received, I mean, the action required, a motion would be in order.
Sure.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Burman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Riesel.
Aye.
Mr. Slaughters.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now, the police department outside work policy.
This is a topic that we brought forth briefly in the past with council, and just alerting you that we were working on this as a potential policy change in the police department. What this is, is an out, it's referred to as outside city detail. Currently, our police department officers are not permitted to work outside the community of Fort Thomas for any special work assignment details. So this policy is intended to address that. I don't know the exact history, but there was a period of time in the past where they actually were capable of doing that type of work and did outside employment outside the city of Fort Thomas. But that was called back, and it essentially had to do with IRS standards, some liability standards, and so the policy changed that they were only allowed to do that type of work detail within the community. So we've gone back and looked at where that policy puts us today, and what you have is a proposal that would allow that to function again as outside detail, and under what parameters that would be possible for our officers to participate. There's a lot of requests for use of police officer and outside details. They act under their police powers regardless. If they are a deputized police officer, they act in that capacity at any location in Campbell County. This is specific to Campbell County only, so it would not allow anything beyond the limits of Campbell County, but it would extend beyond the limits of Fort Thomas. And essentially, the, the policy creates a standard for what type of details would be available, and it requires the authorization of an exact enumeration of which details, so for example, and what's prohibited. So for example, there's not an inclusion for any, anything where alcohol sales is the primary function on the premises, so they couldn't serve as a balancer for establishments that have crowd control issues, where people are consuming alcohol as a primary function. We use outside details for some of the stuff in the city. So a lot of these are, for example, home football games at your local high schools. The more current request and need is, and interest with our officers, is the availability of BBNT center in Highland Heights, and the number of officers that are needed for the functions there. And particularly this year, they're hosting all the UC games, so they've doubled their number of dates out there, and they don't have personnel from all the other departments to cover those, so it would, it would help that situation. But more specifically, it creates a list of approved, it can be adjusted annually, and it addresses the issue with the IRS, and I'll let Joe comment on that. But it basically averages the types of details that are on the list by value. It requires all the funding to be transferred to the city, so there's no cash transaction, it has to go through the city and paid through our payroll, and that meets all the IRS standards for reporting. And that was one of the issues in the past. Some of those details offer cash, they pay the officer directly, and based on liability issues and the fact that they are a deputized officer with the city of Fort Thomas, it eliminates that, they're acting in their capacity as a city of Fort Thomas police officer, and they're being paid by the city of Fort Thomas, the funding is a, is a transfer in and out. And the rate is established off of the total number of potential details. So that's essentially the policy, unless I missed anything that anybody had any questions on.
What happens if they were to be injured?
If they're working detail and they're injured, they are unemployed in the city of Fort Thomas, so there's a potential that they could have injury outside the city of Fort Thomas working in detail.
Is there any additional administrative burden or anything with processing that?
Very minimal, I mean, we do different rates for different departments, it would just be a set rate. And that was part of the issue, we don't want to chase rates for every different detail, and that's where the averaging came in. Averaging the rates just gives a different scale for the reporting hours.
This, what is, is this based on policies of surrounding communities in the county?
Yes, I'm, this is similar to what other jurisdictions do, and quite frankly, I'm not aware of another community in Campbell County that does not allow details outside their city limits. I think Fort Thomas is the one that has not at this point. Others, other cities allow their officers to do details outside their city.
I mean, back to Jeff's question, I mean, it just seems funny that if they're, if they're under the employ of Newport or whatever, it would, and there was an injury and it was a worker's compiture or whatever, it would still fall back on Fort Thomas's?
Well, they're still wearing their uniform, right?
Yes.
Fort Thomas uniform.
It would be a uniformed police officer.
But they'd be under the payroll of somebody else.
They would be on our payroll.
On our payroll.
Right.
Or they're working for by that other entity.
Correct.
Oh, so there's that flow.
And that's what other cities do as well, that--
No, no, they don't. Not all cities do it that way.
So it's direct payment?
Some of them do direct payment, yes.
If there's direct payment, do they?
They do not relieve themselves from liability.
Yeah.
They're still serving in the capacity of a police officer in that uniform.
Some of these reference cash, or like, I mean, at the end of the list, Southgate, which lists New Rip and Party Source, which are both-- which lists New Rip and Party Source, which are both actually Newport. Um, I don't know why they're in Southgate, but it, how is, what's this, the cash?
They, the other, um, attachment there is any, any funding that they receive, they have to report and, and give to the city and then they're paid off of payroll.
Oh, sure.
So, these rates listed on here, that would be, that, you know, a gross amount, so social security and so on would be reduced from that?
Yeah, the idea is to start with the, is to start with the weighted rate based on these amounts and then effectively reduce that base rate to a rate that takes into account our costs for pension, social, well, not social, pension and Medicare. So, effectively, let's say right now, for instance, our weighted average overtime rate for officers is sixty-some odd dollars, sixty-six, sixty-seven dollars. That takes into account the, the pension and Medicare rate. The, the base rate is really somewhere near about forty-odd dollars. So, in this instance, we would take a, an average rate of roughly forty-seven dollars, forty-two odd dollars, I think, and we would make sure that we, make sure that our, our additional costs are covered and work that down to a base rate that we would pay, base overtime rate, we would pay up, I don't know what it ends up being, thirty-odd dollars. So, effectively, we cover our costs. We cover our additional costs over that overtime rate. So, we're not, we're not gonna pay them forty-two dollars and then thirty-eight percent pension on top of that. We're going to, we're going to take in the full forty-two dollars, pay them what is effectively the lower rate and make sure that our pension costs, mostly pension costs are covered at that point. So, it's, we're not gonna spend any more than the money that we get from the, than we get from the other municipalities.
But some ways are below that rate though, right? So, Alexandria County Fair is thirty-five dollars an hour.
It's, it's, it's weighted based on, uh, there are a couple of, a couple of calculations that would actually increase that. Uh, for instance, the Campbell County PD for, uh, Campbell County Festivals, the Festival of AJ Jolly, that's calculate that, those officers' regular overtime rate. We use what would be our officers' regular overtime rate in that calculation. I've got a whole calculator, I've got a whole spreadsheet. We would use our officers' overtime rate, that would get that up above that thirty, forty-odd dollars. It, it's not, let's say it's not totally perfect. However, we have to pick a rate that, pick a rate that suffices.
So, all these rates are not the same?
Correct.
So, if they work Alexandria, they don't get thirty-five an hour? If they work NKU, they don't get forty-five an hour?
They, they would get forty-five an hour at NKU. They wouldn't get thirty-five an hour. However, as it currently stands right now, we, we.
How, how does that work to cover our costs then?
It, the assumption is the average of it would cover our costs. I mean, right now, we charge a, we charge a weighted average rate of sixty-seven, sixty-eight dollars right now. That's the weighted rate for all officers. So, if you have a higher ranking officer, that officer's rate is higher than sixty-eight dollars weighted. If you have a lower ranking officer, it's less than sixty-eight dollars weighted. We're just, we're just making the assumption that the average of it is gonna cover our costs. It, it's the same idea here. We're gonna pick a rate that at the average is gonna cover our costs. We're gonna win some and lose some.
Are we, are we gonna limit the exposure to our officers working the fair if we're not picking up rates at the forty-five dollar an hour?
So, it's like, who would want that detail?
Well, and, and, and it really depends. It's gonna pay our officers the same.
Well, the other part of this is, this is a manual evaluation, so we'll create an average based on usage after the first year. So, if they're doing more detail work, then at a higher rate, it'll, it'll adjust.
Yeah, if we can actually wait to buy, if we can wait to buy hours, we could become a bit more effective rate at this point.
And then are we subsidizing some of these? So, for example, in New Riffs, thirty dollars an hour cash, are we subsidizing a private business based on the higher rates from some public organizations?
As it stands right now, we are in some cases.
That's my concern, I'm okay with that.
It's not significantly different than what we do right now.
Right.
Well, we don't do anything right now, right? I mean, we don't, this is not permitted right now.
We don't, but, but, but we're still, but we're still in situations where we could charge a, we could charge an institution more for the officer that we currently have on that inside the city detail. We do not. We, we, we charge a lower rate. So, in, in cases like that, I mean, if we have a lieutenant work a football game, it's gonna cost more. It costs us more than the rate that we charge. However, that's just the agreed upon rate and, and that's the, the average of what we calculated.
Could we eliminate some of these detail options?
Yes. Well, we can certainly eliminate some of them and, and like Ron said, this first year is really kind of a, we're gonna take a stab at it and see, and see how it works in practice. And then going forward, if we do have more instances of those lower rates showing up, we'll weight it based on that. Now, so, in, in those situations, if we're, if that's gonna weight the rate lower, I would think our officers would discontinue one of those details, knowing that it would, it would lower the amount they're being paid.
So, what's the benefit of having those lower options on there? Just having more options to work?
Yeah.
What's the benefit of, of removing those options? Not, our, our risk, our risk would be limited then?
They have less, they make less money if they're on there because the average rate is decreased because there's lower value in those.
Well, yeah, no.
But eliminating them would raise the amount and it would give them less detail options. That's, that's, I mean, it's just a ratio then.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I mean, if they're willing to work them at that rate, then it goes into the averaging.
Yeah, but we're subsidizing some of them.
Well, you don't know. I mean, based on experience, so, yes, but they would have, there, there's no incentive for them to choose one or another, once, once the policy's adopted as proposed, because no matter where they work, they're gonna get paid the same.
Well, time and half comes into play, I guess, if they work forty hours on a regular detail in the city and then they pick up a detail outside and they end up working sixty-nine weeks, are we stuck for?
Yeah, so they get paid what they get paid. We get reimbursed what is on the sheet. Is that, is that what you got, is that what we're saying here?
Right. The averaging is what is, is the rate that they would get paid.
You know, so, uh.
So, what's, where's our break even on the, on the sheet? What's a break even hourly reimbursement?
The, the break even, what we calculated with what the numbers that we have for the police department is forty-two odd dollars an hour, give or take.
Um, there are a lot of questions here. Typically, when we have something like this come up, it gets referred to a committee. Is that what the thought was, what happened uh, tonight? Or was, is there some need to, to act more, I mean, this isn't, is it your public safety?
I.
You are. This, this, this hasn't been your committee, has it?
No, not all policies go to committee, but you can refer it to committee. I mean, it's a timing issue and, and obviously, if you wanna evaluate it further, we can do that. Uh, for example, we had presentation on the body cameras and, and that was a similar type of policy, police department policy, but you can refer it to committee if you wanna do study on it.
Would it go to finance instead of public safety? I mean, this is kind of a fiscal issue from all the questions that have come up so far.
It could, yeah. I, I suppose it could as well, but I certainly want input as to, you know, the genesis of this, this request and I think it's relevant, uh, as to, you know, just operationally, how other departments do this and so on. So, it's both really. Yeah.
Yeah, for something, what's the purpose? What do our police officers wanna do? You know, what's the benefit to them? What's the benefit to us?
Right.
All those things.
There's gotta be, we're having, for, if our break even's forty-two an hour and we're, and we have a ton of exposure for injury and risk, why would we subsidize that with our city funds?
Well, you would think it might be part of the negotiations with the police, you know, in contract type or whatever, as part of their compensation package, as an inducement or something, but I, I don't.
Yeah, that's a whole different conversation though.
Yeah, that's yet another.
This is.
And it's not covered by the contract?
No.
Yeah. Um, okay, so.
We, for action, I guess.
I, yeah, I mean, it seems to me, this ought to be looked at a little further so that people have a better understanding of, of the cost aspect of it. Uh, I mean, I guess we could just say, as the chief here at this meeting, what, you know, what, what your officers', you know, perspective on this is?
Uh, this is something that came about through negotiations, um, obviously, when they were doing the, the contract negotiations. Um, this is an idea that came up among the group of guys, um, that they just wanted this ability and this chance to be able to uh, work these kind of details throughout Campbell County, if it would be possible.
And, and that is, do, does virtually every other department in the county permit this in some fashion?
Yes.
And then the, the, the other aspect of that though, that I would be interested in is, to Ken's point, uh, a more of a financial aspect in that is, well, how do they, payment, if it's just a straight cash payment, then we're, then as a city financially, we are out of it. If we do this method of bringing it in, then we're into it. And.
But I guess every detail request comes through the city and so we would be expecting a final report from what that detail entails?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I guess that's how it would be controlled.
Any kind of, like, the city of Newport comes to us every year for Riverfest and obviously, they open up that overtime detail on that day because it's one of their busiest days. Um, they have a package offer that they give to each officer that comes and works that includes a bonus. Um, however, you know, that's something they, they contact me first, but then obviously I go through, you know, Joe and Ron and, um, obviously confirm it and make sure it's gonna work. But ultimately, the check is given to, to Joe, um, which ultimately is given to the officers in their own check.
Well, if we've already made a commitment to this, negotiations it looks like we.
No, we did not make any.
Oh, okay.
It's not a negotiated item. It's a policy item. Yeah, this is, this is a policy item in the Police Department. And, and again, it, going back to the full history of this, it was permitted in the past. It was removed from policy and it had to do with IRS standards. And, and that's kind of what we're dancing around a little bit. Some of that conversation is, you know, the reporting requirements and what the city's involvement. If our police officers are working in a capacity as a police officer, then, you know, we're responsible potentially, if they're earning under that badge, then we have an obligation to, to make hold their time served when it comes to CRS, for example. So, that you could, you could backlog all that. So, if they were permitted to work the details without it being reported and put through our payroll, at some point in the future, potentially, we could be responsible for matching the CRS for every hour that they worked on a detail. And that's part of the reason that, that it was removed from policy and part of the reason that it's being presented this way is because it would account for that aspect.
What would this be, and then, uh, just as I have a good ear, but I mean, with all the controversy about, um, the retirement system and the pension spiking legislation that's going on, um, I would be, I would just logically have some concerns as to this could be kind of an M run around, any changes that might come there so that somebody could amass some overtime in the months prior to retirement through this vehicle. Um, is, do you understand my concern?
Uh-huh. But the, the spiking is capped. I mean, they've addressed that issue with ten percent. So, that, that's not, it's not gonna permit them to do that. They, they could do it working for us and our overtime details within the Police Department or this. This has a limiting number also within a pay period or within a month.
I, I'm all for the idea. Uh, there, my concerns are exposing our officers to hazards, injury, and then subsidizing that. If they're covered, I'm, it's great. If the break even's forty-two bucks an hour, then, then I don't see why we just don't, don't accept anything on this list that's less than forty-two bucks an hour. Cause I don't, I don't like the idea of exposed, I want the officers to be able to have any option that they can to go out and, and use the badge that they earned, to earn some money, as long as it doesn't affect what's happening with their, their primary position in Fort Thomas. But on that note, I don't wanna pay especially private, subsidize for private institutions. County, it's a little bit different story. Municipality's a little bit different story, but not private institutions for A, at all, and B, with, with the exposure of them potentially getting hurt and us covering that cost if they are.
And that, I'm not sure that we could avoid. If they're asking a police officer, I don't know under what circumstance, uh, other than restricting them as we have currently where they're not permitted to work outside the city of Fort Thomas.
Which is accept, it would be acceptable if we weren't subsidizing at the same time. So, it's a kind of.
Two different things.
Two different things, but when they work together, it's, it makes it a little bit harder to swallow. But like, like, uh, we were talking about earlier, having, making sure that we address this a little more and maybe take it to a committee or maybe committee as a whole or maybe finance or whatever, talk about it more.
Seems like committee as a whole might make sense because everybody seems to have some, you know, so, but if we, if it was not, I'm not making that motion.
I think Joe could probably illustrate with some calculations and numbers and maybe help the committee.
Meaning that it should go to finance or public safety or?
That's your point.
Well, yeah.
Committee as a whole.
If it goes to committee, the whole, you don't have to.
Yeah, I mean, what's your pleasure? Is that a motion?
Move to bring it to committee as a whole.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, further discussion about that. And, and, well, I, I'll ask my own question. I mean, what, what really is the timing that we're shooting for on this?
Well, I mean, obviously, some of the, the current need has to do with the BBNT details, so.
When, they start when? They're going out now, I guess.
They'll start soon.
With UCs in particular.
I mean, that's where the demand is currently and it's the opportunity. And, you know, those are not high-risk details, but yes, there is a potential if they're in uniform.
Is it possible?
Call a special meeting then?
Is it possible in the interim to say, except for BBNT arena, which can start immediately based on this policy?
Is that above the break even?
I don't know.
Then, I'd be, I'd be on board with that.
I'll defer to legal counsel on that. I don't know.
Well, I think we just change your schedule.
Yeah.
And just say.
And then we could add more later.
I mean, their scheduling there now is the issue and that's, quite honestly, that's probably the most frequent.
Well, and then maybe the most urgent too. I mean, if you look at this list, the other stuff is, you know, all right.
How do we do that? Just adopt it as a?
Well, you would adopt the, the attached, um, the only authorized one would be that one by identification.
But then refer to, to, I don't know, maybe we don't go to committee as a whole, maybe it's, it's, uh, just any committee now to, to, to study the list and adding to the list.
Be a finance problem, right?
I don't know. I guess.
Seems to be a fiscal issue.
All right. Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right. So, the motion is just to, just to clarify, it's to.
It's in your mouth, is that your motion?
Approve the proposed, uh, policy, uh, accept that the attached list would be one detail only and that is BBNT arena.
So, it doesn't change the, the, the policy itself, it just defines the list as being limited to one, one potential detail.
And so, further additions to that list would have to be brought to us.
And then, I guess, in that though, would be to refer to committee to, yeah, review the list. So, who's seconded that? Is that okay with your second then? Okay, so.
Finance committee?
Oh, to the finance committee?
I have committee of the whole.
Was, was.
That was the original.
I thought, I thought you were changing the motion completely to just changing that last page to BBNT only.
I mean, it can be two separate motions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you wanna do it that way, just first to approve this policy with?
Yeah.
All right. Approve this policy with, uh, with BBNT only on the list. That's, that's the motion. Then we can consider a later referral to the committee in another motion.
No, Roger, this is actually gonna be adopted by ordinance.
Oh, I got it.
So, it ends at first reading. Because it becomes part of the Police Policy and Procedures Manual. So.
Oh, okay.
So, if you want to do a, I was thinking of this, you wanna do a first reading tonight of this with only the BBNT on it. And then you could do a second reading next month and adopt it. And then if you had your meeting of the whole or whichever committee you're selling, and they vote, agree with it, we could then do an emergency reading if we have to at the next meeting.
With the revised.
If they're doing scheduling now.
For the other, um, venues.
Okay.
Can we do an emergency meeting to, we do first reading tonight and emergency, if they're scheduling now, there's urgency there. And if we have to wait a whole nother month for all, we're through basketball season.
That's what it's gonna be anyway. I mean, first reading now and then next reading at the next meeting. So, we're just amending it to BBNT only at this stage.
They could probably still schedule it, right? They want us to watch the game until the actual game starts, just like.
Late soon.
All right. Yeah, okay.
All right. Where's Mayor House when you need it? This is totally out of.
[laughing].
Okay, so, uh, there is actually an ordinance in your package, so, um, Dan, no. So, Dan, no motion?
No, it's at your spot.
I mean, at your spot, at your spot. So, since we are almost to that, we can jump ahead of the finance committee report. If we just want to go ahead and have a motion on this. Well, you don't need anything. You just have a first reading.
A first reading of an amended ordinance.
So, we'll just wait and do that.
Right.
Well, the manual's attached. It's not part of the ordinance, so, yes, I, with Jan's suggestion, yeah.
Melissa will change that detail page and wipe everything off except BBNT.
And if we, in the meantime?
In the meantime, if you decide to go with the others, then that ordinance, we could always not have a second reading of this and just do a first and second reading of emergency and everything at one time.
So, we don't need any official action on the ordinance itself at this point. But if we do want to refer it to committee, we then still need some action on that.
Yes.
You would need it at twenty-five.
That's where you started.
It's already been seconded. They take it to the committee.
Committee of the whole.
Yes.
All right. And the only note would be that it would be our hope that we could do that before we adopt the ordinance at the next meeting. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Mr. Beazel.
Aye.
Ms. Flot.
Aye.
And again, that was just a motion referred to committee. Yeah, we'll, yes. So, the next thing, any, any other new business?
No.
All right. Fin, excuse me, finance committee report on disbursements.
Report of disbursement, September nineteenth through October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. General fund, two hundred forty-one thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. Power park fund, six hundred seventy-three dollars and thirty-one cents. Public Works KDOT fund, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. Reoccurring debt service fund, one thousand, one hundred forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CBD revitalization, three thousand, seven hundred fourteen dollars and three cents. Waste fees, ninety thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Police and fire pension fund, one thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars and twenty-three cents. Total, three hundred sixty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. We, the undersigned members of the finance committee, recommend that warrants number two seven two eight three two eight four four be approved, and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Ms. Kelly, member, Mr. Beazel, member.
Motion. Most made, is there a second? Most made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Mr. Cameron.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly. Mr. Peterman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Beazel.
You. Yeah, how about you? Okay, now, after all that discussion, the ordinances and resolutions, the agenda, I was first reading, the ordinance, oh eleven two seventeen.
Ordinance oh eleven two thousand seventeen, an ordinance amending the Fort Thomas Police Department Policies and Procedures Manual, oh oh six two thousand fourteen, amended oh thirteen two thousand sixteen, and oh oh five two thousand seventeen, by adding policies pertaining to outside city details. Now therefore being ordained by the Board of Counsel of the City of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, as follows. Section one, that the Fort Thomas Police Department Policies and Procedures Manual is hereby amended to include the following new policies attached here to, as Exhibit A, and listed by title as follows. Section two, administrative manual, chapter thirty, outside city details. Section two, that this ordinance shall take effect from and after the earliest date provided by law following its adoption and publication as required by law.
Okay, that was first reading, doesn't require any action. Any other business come before the council? If not, means hearing.
Good job.
Lovely.
Good job.
Yeah.
Come on. I'm not getting up.
He's not getting up to you.
What are we, what are we going to do about it? I think, I think we should look at that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a tough one.